Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 22, 2024 Board Meeting. I'll ask Mr. Nealon to stand up and give us the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, I'll get right into it. First of all, Happy New Year. But first thing on the agenda is the minutes of December 18. Does the Board read that?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes? I have one.
None for me, ma'am.
None.
All right, on the last page, we're going to be, there's a public hearing set for tonight that we will be canceling it. We're tabling it until the next board meeting, and that had to do with commercial vehicles. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You know what, before we do the chamber, I have a proclamation. Somebody very dear to me, and dear to our people, should be recognized for his 20 years of service, Brian Stanton. The Brian is here too, come on down. Come on down. We're very fortunate to have Brian Stanton on the village. He really does look out for the village, and he always has the best in his hospitality for the village. And we're all very proud of him, 20 years. Very fortunate to have you as a superintendent. I want to thank you very much for that. But... This is actually, of course, still really stepping up a notch, trying to get up to your caliber, because you really set us on guard, and you're doing a great job. And a little citation for you may hereby be known that the mayor and the board of trustees of Incorporated Village of Lindbrook, we hereby desire to publicly acknowledge Brian Stanton, so to speak, superintendent of the building department. Whereas we do recognize you for your dedication service and outstanding commitment to our residents during 20 years of employment as superintendent of the building department. Be further known that your years of service have been marked by your tireless effort, and commend you for your exceptional manner in which you have always carried out your duties, and we wish to express our sincere thanks to you for your contributions to our community. Thank you very much, Brian. Thanks.
Anytime.
Anytime. Well, we are very fortunate, because we are going to call up Milton Bradley, I think they're still in business, right? And we have a new game with Brian Stanton. It's moving up. Brian, all the little things that you've helped us with, and the people that you're involved with, I'm going to hang this on the wall. I love this. Does everybody see the new game with me? It's all about Brian. It's all about Brian. Brian? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board. I'll keep it short and sweet. I've been here 20 years, and I enjoy working here every year. Every administration I worked under, it feels like a gentleman. I was born and raised in this village, and it's an honor to serve. Hopefully, I've got a few more years here.
Next is the Chamber of Commerce. Jeffrey? Mr. Greenfield, citizen taxpayer. Why don't we do that first?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, residents of the village. I know it's a cold January night, but we have a very warm and exciting presentation here of the checks of the proceeds for last year's very successful golf outing. We were very blessed last year with two outstanding honorees, our own John G. Ordano and our friend. John, history with this golf outing goes back to the Mayflower, and he's been at every outing. He had plenty of records to show me to that effect, and he was an outstanding honoree and represents everything that's good for this village. So we thank you, John, for helping to make this, I think it might have been the most successful golf outing ever. And we have nice checks to present. Our friends down the block, the Greenberg family and Michael Zalitrik, they couldn't be here tonight, but they were our community business honoree, and they contributed a lot to the success of the outing also. And they have equally supported it annually, but not as long as John. I want to call up those representatives of my committee that are here, from the chamber and from the golf committee, and there's a few people that couldn't be here tonight that sense regrets, but Steve is in North Carolina, Steve Wangle, and he told me he's going to watch the YouTube video, so if he watches it, he worked on this as well as, come on up, pal. As well as, we had a fellow named Kevin Krieger who did, and he's in Fort Myers, and I'm going to have him watch the video. He took care of the automation. This year's outing, the first time we were online, we had analysis. The mayor, myself, Kevin, and John sat down and reviewed the results of the outing. And now, Mayor, if you want to come up and help me also, we'll start with, do we start with the biggest check or the smallest check? Which end, let's make a review. Let's start with the biggest check. Okay. The real check is in my pocket, and Rena's here for the community chest. Mayor, Rena Beach, come on down. And 40,000 dollars. We have a... Okay. And here's the real check. Just make sure I signed it today. Okay. So we're happy to present this to you, and put it to good use, again, as you always do with the community chest. Next, the Lindbrook VFW. We're happy again to present and support your efforts, our veterans, our heroes in Lindbrook. $3,000.
You guys have impeccable timing, too, because insurance is a work set.
They always like to insure us that. All right, so this is a very nice opportunity for us to say thank you to you and present again to you this year, and thank those members of your VFW that did come and support the outing. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the next check. So we have a check here for the Lindbrook American Legion for $2,000, and we're happy to support you and your efforts, and thank you.
I think it's three. You can all say so.
All right. So a few other words. We've already started, the mayor and myself, working on next year, and the committee will convey soon, but we have a date. I want everyone to write this down and save the date. August 12, 2024. We had great hospitality by the Inwood Country Club, and we're going to continue to go there next year, because they made us not only a great day last year, the weather was great, that worked out, but also they made a great event for us. And the hot dogs at the Hebrew National sponsored hot dog pavilion at the halfway house, they were very good. So we have that in the contract again for next year. And I'll start by pledging to be the Hebrew National Hot Dog sponsor again next year.
I just want to thank Jeff and the committee for all the work they do, and they do work on this throughout the year. The Community Chest Committee is also very grateful. That's quite a lot of money, and we do put it to good use. We help any family in Lindbrook that's in need, and if you are in need, please feel free to call the Village Hall. You will get a call back, and we will do what we can for you. I'd also like, we have two very large benefactors I'd just like to thank as well. One is Crown Ford, and the other one is Cindy Schreiner. We really appreciate your generosity. It's amazing. Thank you very much, Jeff and Rena.
Okay. Are we going to take a big picture of those?
Sure. Want to hold down?
I want another picture. We'll each, we'll hold all the checks, Rena.
Should we get?
For 30. Have yours, no? No, come over here with this check.
Once again, I'd like to thank everyone that was involved in the golf outing. As you can see, things happen in our village. We had that fire at Christmas, and there was a lot of things that were able to be done because of the money of the community chest, which is really very wonderful. I think there was over $7,500 that was given out through the community chest, just in gifts alone, I believe. Correct, Rena?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's just Christmas alone. So you see, the money is being used to help people in our village, which is great. Next on the agenda, Fire, or Polly. Polly, why don't you finish up the chamber if you have some things to say?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Nice to be here. First off, I want to say thank you to Jeff. He worked so hard on those golf outings. He's done it for many years. He does have a good committee, but he does a lot of work, and we really do appreciate it. I know it's not easy.
The labor of love is what I do.
Yeah. We had our annual gala last week on the 18th, and we had a really nice time. We had some lovely honorees, and it was really a nice night for everyone, I think. We're going to do it every year. We have a great time with it. We had Ben Tienabear from the school, we had Anthony Falsetta, we had Chris Kelly and Chris Anderson that we were honoring. So it was a really nice night. Next, coming up, we're going to have our mayor, Alan Beach, is going to speak at Rivermill on February 6th and give everyone the state of the village. So I think that's always a really well-attended meeting. We're looking forward to that. I'm looking, working right now, if anybody has any suggestions, I could use help. We're working, having a meeting March 6th on AI. We're going to try to explain AI to everybody and help them understand how it can help or not their business. Then on February 12th, before that, we're going to have our dine around. It's coming up. We're going to do it. It's so far so good. It's Chinese New Year's, so it'll be fun to do that. It'll be fun to have everybody, he's going to give a nice price, he'll have a price fix menu. So we just firmed that up the other day, so that's coming up.
What was the date of that?
That's February 12th. It's a Monday. It was like the only day we could figure out to do it. I'm going to have my grandkids, so anybody can bring kids, it's fine. It's a great, it's a nice casual place.
Bring the kids, they laugh.
They love it. They love it.
They're going to enjoy the food, you're not.
It's great. The children like Chinese food, really. February 26th, we're having another networking breakfast, so everybody should check that out. That's a lot of fun, you know, just to meet people, get up early. That's for the early birds. I'm not always there, but we have a lot of early birds, and we have really good, even if it's like eight people, it's really good networking. You know, just start your day out like that. It's a really good meeting. I did send to John requests. John, did you get my request for dates?
Yes, we have it on the agenda.
Okay. I just wanted to explain. Can I explain a little bit about it, too? Okay. We have a lot of things that we want to do this year, and one of them is the craft fair. We would like to have a craft fair, and we're hoping to have it on Atlantic Avenue, and the date we zeroed in on is July 14th. We'd also like to take Stouderman, like up to Craft and kind of up to the parking lot, kind of halfway down Stouderman both ways, because we'd like to do rides and hopefully food trucks and the petting zoo. I'm iffy about the petting zoo in the middle of the summer, but we're going to talk about that. And so we're kind of asking, well, we are asking permission to have that craft fair, so you might need to talk about that. But Lori McGinnis is going to be the chairperson on that. She was coming tonight, but she did not get here yet, so I just wanted you to meet her. I don't, you know Lori, I think, right? Everybody knows Lori McGinnis from Bristol, but she's going to be the chairperson on that. And we have this person who's supposedly really well-known for organizing craft fairs, and we want to make sure it's nice quality stuff, not junk, and we're hoping for it to be a nice upscale craft fair. And then the other thing I wanted to ask you about, that you might have to go talk about this, too, is cruise nights. We are, I'm working, I'm in the middle of discussing with the Village Valley Stream, the chamber president, and then the man from the village who's in charge of the car show. We want to have it on Thursday nights again, hopefully, but there's, we don't want to, we all agree, Valley Stream and Lindbrook agrees, we don't want to have it the same night, because that doesn't make any sense. So we're kind of trying to figure out which is the best night. I think we don't mind Tuesday or Thursday, and I was just wondering if, when I go to talk to them, if I could be free to say either one, you know, so I don't, I don't know. We did talk about having the one rule for us, is that we have a cutoff time for cancellation that's comfortable, so you don't lose, the village doesn't lose money on, you know, policemen and everything that you have to have, so.
Also, some of the nights, it really wasn't well-received down there.
Yeah, some nights were bad because of the weather, then we had the yellow night, then we had, you know, when it was too hot, and we should have canceled ahead of time on that. And that's where I think...
We do still have some people on the avenue complaining that you're shutting their business down because of that.
Of the car show?
Yes.
Who?
I'll have to say it. Well, that's real good. Rob!
No, no, if we did Tuesday night, we'd solve that one problem.
Tuesday night, you had a problem?
No. If we did the car show on Tuesday night, the one person who was objecting would be happy. But I had Joe...
It's a shame to close the street down and no one shows up.
Right.
And then this person, this business is complaining to me that, look at this. And it would be nice if you could get your day well in advance, and possibly they can schedule their business, that they know that that night, particular night, is going to be closed, so they wouldn't have people come into their business.
Right. That, that, the village business has, is closed, I think, Tuesday night, so Tuesday would, excuse me.
Let's not put the finger on it, Polly.
What?
Let's not put the finger on it. We don't know who it is, do you?
No, we don't know who it is.
Okay, that's what we're going.
But, no, I want to make everybody happy, if something...
Correct. Well, that's never going to happen, but we can try and make them, you know, work with them a little bit.
Yeah.
That, you know, they can say at least that we're considering their feelings.
I, no, I agree. I agree.
All right, good, so we'll...
But we did, I did have Joe Carason polled the whole block, and everybody was either like, didn't care, or great, they thought it was great, except maybe one person.
Chief Palladino, how did that work out for you? As far as overtime for the guys and things like that, was there an issue?
No, we really didn't have a hard time with the overtime. A couple times we did to cancel, it was canceled well enough in advance.
Okay.
We were able to help people. They did have an unfortunate straight walk. They had the two nights, they had the smoke, and I think one other night later in the summer.
It was so hot.
Yeah, but it was, that smoke from the upstate fires came down a couple nights.
Canada.
Canada, yeah. Yes, so it is what it is. I mean, you can't guess that stuff, so it was well-received by some people that are in Lindbrook, so. It really wasn't a big inconvenience, and we, each week we refined it, and we had it run pretty well, but...
All right. All right, so the best thing you could do, Paul, is get me your day as fast as possible.
Okay, so can I negotiate with them Tuesday or Thursday?
Does anybody have an issue with that? What? Whatever works for businesses. Whatever works for the businesses, yes.
Yeah, because we don't want to do it the same night. That was part of our problem.
Doesn't make sense.
Sometimes would...
Does not make sense to do that.
No, it's silly. Yeah.
And the timeframe is good with everybody?
Just for the chief, how much in advance for a cancellation, does it affect like the Manning, or you need?
We had a time.
We have a stipulation, stipulation in our contract that if there's overtime, and it's an outdoor event that could be canceled, you're supposed to call in two hours in advance, so.
So you could do a relatively short notice?
Yeah, so, yeah, I usually ask, it was nice if we knew by noon, because the day tour also has to then get the barricades out. It's just, you know, it's a lot of work that if we're not going to do this, you know, but, you know, it's, we worked with them best we could, so.
No.
We usually, we usually shut things down by like 12, by like 2:00.
Right, but from your end, you have a good idea of the time when it would be canceled is best for you.
Yeah, yeah, if, if, contractually it's two hours, it's nice when we get four hours, it's, you know, it's...
Noon seems...
Yeah, noon seems usually, yeah. Especially weather reports nowadays usually pretty much know what's going on, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll let you know what's going on.
All right, good.
Okay. We are having experience Lindbrook again, May 4th, at the Lindbrook Library, and of course Prom Night is on. So those, I'm just trying to get all of our dates to you ahead of time. So Prom Night is on a Tuesday this year, on June 25th, so we'll have to coordinate that if we have a car show that night, but we'll work that out. We've been known to do that. And that's, that's it. And the only other thing I want to say is shop local.
All right, Polly, thank you very much.
And do business local. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Jeff, citizen taxpayer, how about the fire department? Bring the fire, Chief Bean?
So I don't have any big checks to present, I'm just a quick report.
Oh, how disappointing.
First off, I hope everyone had a happy and healthy New Year. Mr. Mayor, the Board, Brian, congratulations, 20 years. Just some quick numbers from, we did our, we calculated our numbers, we brought numbers from last year. So 2023, the Lindbrook Fire Department went on 2,158 alarms. That was mostly, you know, 1,600-ish were ambulance calls, so you'll probably see them running around, just seeing Northwell helping out here and there. Quite a bit, you know, it's, the number's just going up every year with the implementation of more and more residential automatic alarm systems. As far as the fire end of the department, that's our bread and butter, that's probably 75% of what we respond to is automatic fire alarms. Couple quick things with the cold weather. I didn't know what that white stuff was a couple weeks, last week, but we did have some snow for the first time in two years, so just a reminder for all the residents, when you're out there shoveling your sidewalk, if you could please shovel out the hydrants as well, it will do us a tremendous help if we, God forbid, we need to use those hydrants. So that's one thing, and just safe travels on the road, just, you know, remember that if it gets slick and icy out there, there's a couple nights where the ice got pretty bad. So last year, we did have 14 new members join the Lindbrook Fire Department, which is nice. This year in April, the state does a statewide recruitment drive, so we're looking to get involved with that and hopefully pick up those numbers a little bit as well. Unfortunately, we did have six members pass away last year, which is a high number for us. You know, we've got a lot of older members still in the department, they still help out in different aspects, but we're always looking for new members, so anyone out there, we accept, we just changed our bylaw, we used to have an age restriction, we got rid of the age restriction, so members of all ages, as long as you are physically able to come down and help, we are willing to take, we're willing to take you, over the age of 18, so. All, all help is good, right? So that's pretty much all I have for today. One last thing with the cold weather, just be careful with space heaters especially, that's a big danger. You know, people plug them in, they forget about them, they throw something on top of them. They're nice, they're nice to have, especially in the cold weather, but they can be very dangerous if you forget about them. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I see Brian's daughter is here. Brian, would you like to take a picture here with your daughter? Bill can, Bill, can you come down for a take picture? Take the special picture?
Somebody came late?
Hi, you got more time, stop, sir?
Your best, he's a killer, huh?
Come down here, come down here.
Brian's just going to have to dance now.
Why are you, why are you touting him?
Brian, doesn't mean we still can't go out to dinner. Locally.
Next on the agenda is appointment of election inspectors. Do I need to read them off, John, or is it just vote as they are? As they exhibit? Okay. Any issues? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fire Department is on the agenda for the one who do the Wounded Warriors again at Grace Park on Saturday, September 21st. Any issues? We're good with that date? September 21st? Yeah? Who's running this now?
I don't remember seeing the date yet, but I know we all have a deadline, so...
so.
Okay, so that's, that's a go, so motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is a public.
Girl scout.
Cookie seller, yeah, uh, yeah, the girls. Uh, next is for the Girl Scouts to sell cookies on Atlantic and Forest. I guess Steve can walk through them, as they did in the past. A motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, uh, what was the chamber of Congress, Adam?
Uh, would she was just talking about the craft here? Number one.
Let's see, yeah, okay, it's done with, okay, so that's been approved, so we agree with that, that's, it's been approved. Uh, then the public hearing for local law, number one, 2024, Chapter 137 dash two, counsel. Uh, I'll open the public hearing at 7:32.
Notice, and I'm not getting as, I'm not as spry as I was a few years ago. Um, before the board, thank you, Mayor, uh, before the board tonight is an amendment of Section 137 hyphen 12 of the Linnbrook Village Code. Chapter 137 deals with garbage collection and recycling, so I'm sure all the residents of the village are absolutely at the edge of their seats in wanting to know how we're amending garbage collection and recycling. But it actually is pretty interesting, it doesn't affect the overwhelming majority of residents, it's only, uh, has to do with commercial businesses and multifamily housing, apartment buildings, and we do have a statute currently that lists out Sections A to E in 137-12, and it allows the village to charge for the, the collection of, of excess accumulation of waste. So in other words, if you either have a business or an apartment house that really goes over the specifications set forth in the statute, the village can charge you for that, for that pickup. What we're amending tonight is we're adding two provisions, we're adding Provision F and G, which allows the village to place those unpaid bills to those apartment houses or what have you, onto and, onto their taxes. So it just facilitates the village in collection of those monies, and it's really pretty straightforward. We already have a pretty thorough provision that was enacted back in 1985 regarding charges for excess accumulation of waste. What this does is gives the village an additional tool to collect those monies and, you know, put it, it can be added to your tax bill. It's similar in a way, if the DPW has to come in and clean your property for oversized grass or, or something like that, property maintenance, the cost of that incurred by the DPW, it goes in your tax bill. So this would be the same type of thing, is that if you're accumulating excessively waste over and above what's set forth in the statute, then we can add it to your tax bill and it has to be paid.
And they would be notified that that's happening?
That's correct, so administratively, what the board is required to do is by April 20th, I believe, every year, April 20th of every year, there'll be a list created, I'm sure in connection with DPW will be creating this list as they cut the sanitation department, and that'll list out all the unpaid charges, and then you will adopt, or you'll adopt in May, that going over to assessing for, for the tax period to be collected.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the floor? Anybody? She's in good shape, so I'll close the public hearing at seven, what was that, 35? 35.
I'd like to thank the board, it's, it's good luck.
Thank you, thank you. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is number eight, it's recreation programs, contracts, um, Antonia has some new people she wants to bring aboard, uh, come down and talk about it a little bit, Magdalena Goffman, Goffman, and Kelly Mantone, Penny Mantone, and there's one more, Rosemarie Attar.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, so I have a few requests, but I'll start with the, the contractors. So I'm looking to bring in a few new contracted programs, Rosemarie Attar to do a pop-up ceramics class, Magdalena Goffman to do weekly Pilates mat classes, and Kenny Mantone to do weekly HIIT fitness classes. So, um, I don't know if you all have the page with the specifications on it, but the ceramics teacher, I'm looking to bring her in, you know, maybe once every couple of months to just do, um, a pop-up class, it'll be a two-hour class. Um, I can go through the, the pricing if you'd like, if you don't have it on the sheet in front of you, but, um, do you all have it?
We have it.
Okay. Do you want me to talk about it?
Um, a little bit more, maybe you can expand on, uh.
Revenue.
Revenue-wise, that'll be self-sufficient.
Sure, um, in terms of revenue, I think we would profit about $100 from the program based on a 20-person class limit, that's what the teacher's limit was. So essentially, each person pays $25, 20 goes towards the teacher's, um, you know, teaching costs, the supplies, the paint, the brushes, everything that she brings with her, and then the $5 from each student would go, you know, back into our space rental essentially, into the, to the village.
And how many students you think will?
So she has a pretty big following, I mean, I found her through, um, some of my fitness class attendants, but I spoke to her and she teaches at a lot of libraries locally, so she usually has, um, between 20 and 30 people in a class, and she said that she often fills a class and will have a waitlist, so I don't think we'll have a problem reaching that, you know, that 20-person, um, minimum, and if we did, I, I think we could figure out if we want to run the class, you know, regardless of if it's a little bit less than 20 people or.
So this will only go, and she'll only get paid if she reaches her maximum for the class?
Correct.
And that goes for the other two?
Um, the other two are a little bit different. The other two are more of, um, similar to how we have, like, the Zumba instructors and the yoga instructors, so both the Pilates class and the HIIT classes would run as 10-week sessions. Um, they would be $55 for an adult for 10 sessions, um, I think it's $40 for the senior rate for the session. Um, for the Pilates class, the HIIT class would be $45 for an adult for 10 sessions, $40 for a senior per session, for 10 sessions. Um, they're an hour class each, everyone brings, you know, their own supplies, same thing with the, the Zumba class or the yoga class, you know, they bring their own mat, they bring their own weights, whatever the, you know, whatever might be necessary for the program, but those run a little bit differently than the, the one day.
Has anybody else got any questions?
Do we anticipate those to fill too?
Um, I know we had a HIIT class in the past that had, I think, between 10 and 12 people signed up for it. Um, I know it was a kind of a earlier time on a Sunday, so I'm thinking we'll have it a little bit later in the day, and hopefully it'll do better at that time. Um, I think the Pilates class will do very well, because I know a lot of, um, the people that do the Zumba class and the senior fitness class, the yoga classes, they're looking for something to do pretty much every day of the week. Um, so I would like to get that in on maybe a Wednesday afternoon or a Monday afternoon in the studio space that we have.
So.
There it is.
They're saying people have expressed interest in the Pilates class.
Yes, yes, and that's a nice class because it's, um, I think it's easily adapted to anyone, you know, who would want to take it, you can make it easier or harder depending on your capabilities, so I think that would be a nice class to include a lot of people in, and then the HIIT class is definitely, um, it's high intensity, so, you know, maybe some younger people will start to join in the classes, um, get a new, you know, group of clients.
So this would all take place in the other building?
Yeah.
Which would loosen up the rec center a little bit more?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And really definitely utilize that other building.
What's the most you can have on the HIIT class? I'm trying to find that.
So the HIIT class and the, um, sorry, just the HIIT class, we can do up to 18 people in that room.
So 18 adults at $45.
Per adult, for the 10 class.
And $50 for the instructor.
Correct.
Okay.
How long is the class? I didn't see that.
They're both, um, an hour long.
One hour, okay. I'm gonna bring some oxygen for Rob. All right, I think anything we do additional there for the residents, I think is good. This seems very reasonable. It's good use for that class.
I think they're great additions to, um, to the rec center.
Great, thank you.
And just make sure the contractors provide whatever need or insurance.
Okay, got it.
Yep, all right, so, let's, let's have a motion to accept. I'll make a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes care of those. Next is Titans La Crosse, they want to have a picnic on Sunday, May 19th. We check that date, we're good?
Yes, the date is all good for them.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last one is the TV crew, would be able to utilize the dance recite. On June 2nd, you're having it?
Correct, it's a Sunday.
And that's not an issue for the, for the film crew, they said no problem?
Um, I reached out to them, I didn't hear back about if the date worked yet, I figured I would check with you guys first if, um, if that's okay for them to, to work the event, and then.
And who's subject to, subject to, or who do you want to check in?
If you don't have a problem, if the board doesn't have a problem utilizing them, and we'll be able, we've been paying an outside crew, which I'm sure ours will be less expensive, correct?
Yeah.
So, um, yes, um, I definitely would make a motion to, to allow, and, um, subject to that date, okay?
Great.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I have one more thing while, while I'm up here? Two more, actually, that I had on the, sorry, a couple things tonight. Um, I wanted to ask if my elite team dancers can perform again at this year's Patriots Day or Memorial Day event that weekend. I don't know what the date is, but the Saturday.
They did it last time, right?
Mm-hmm.
They enjoyed it?
They loved it, they had a great time.
Sure, why not?
Great, thank you. And then, um, we were looking to bring on one more, um, part-time rec attendant, Nicole Benomo, to help assist dance classes, art classes, things like that.
And that's, she's a rehire, correct?
Um, I believe so. I know she used to do, I think, some stuff at the pool.
Yeah, motion to approve?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is it?
Yes, thank you.
No more, one more? Um, the CRP grant application for bucket truck, that's, um, next on the agenda, correct?
Wait, wait, wait.
Skip one?
You got the, uh, seasonals.
Oh, seasonal, okay. All right, oh, that's two, is it? Yeah, I got it, all right, I got it, Michael, thank you. Uh, this is from Pat Champy, and this is from Keith, and, oh, everybody. Attaches a list of staff that we could, uh, we'd like to ask back for 2020, 24 pool season. I'm not gonna read all his names. Um, anybody having issues with anybody on this list?
You gotta recuse?
Yes, I will recuse for, um, myself.
Okay, anybody else?
I will recuse for Nora Kane.
All right. We're good? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as, as posted. That's it, right with that? Next on the agenda is, uh, asking William Gaylaw. You know, Bill Gaylaw's been very good to this village, he's helped us a lot, and now we're asking for a community revitalization program, specifically, we're requesting $175,000 to replacement of a highway department tree, uh, maintenance truck. Uh, the present truck, uh, it's gotta be 15 years old, Phil?
It's 2004, yeah.
2004, wow, okay, wow. Getting some good use out of it, and it's just starting to get old, right?
Yes.
All right, repairs or bills are climbing?
Yeah, actually, uh, keeping an aerial lift up, uh, you get to do a lot of certifications and, uh, it's on, it's a little more distressed, but.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we're, there's a request to change, to replace our bucket truck, which we use on a daily basis, and it's a 20-year-old, uh, piece of machinery. While we do maintain it, the bills do increase. Uh, recently, we just had some overhaul on it, again, which shows always a fire, a high, expensive five-figure repair on all the time, because it's specialized.
Right.
It's got 12,000 hours on it, uh, over the 20 years, so, uh, you know, it, as we all know with trucks, it takes two or three years to get a, a vehicle as a replacement through the manufacturer, so, the sooner we can get a.
That was one of my questions, how long would it take to get it to new?
Right now, as to the leading Altech, which is most, provides most aerial lifts, it's about 20 months.
Okay.
Because with everything, you know, sanitation trucks, fire trucks, ambulances, it's, everything's about two or three years to get a truck done and over.
Will there be any trade-in value to it?
At that time, uh, by that time, we're probably about 14, 15,000 hours on the truck. They're out there, you can, you can always sell something, you know?
There's always a buyer.
There's always a buyer somewhere, yeah.
All right.
Thing is, you know, we, the nice thing about an aerial lift, uh, you have to maintain it every day, no matter what, no matter how old it is, so it has a decent trade-in value.
Any other questions, so what?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is 10, and that's the payout for Mary Somety. Uh, Mary worked for us for 22 years. Our total payout comes to $12,586.94. She was a wonderful employee, sorry to see her go, I hope she enjoys her retirement. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Next, you want to do it, John, or you want me just, uh, go ahead? Next on the agenda is the open taxes.
Yes, Mayor, pursuant to the real property tax law, at this time of the year, the board has requested to certify the list of unpaid 23, 24 taxes, as well as set a date for a tax lien sale of March 14th.
March 14th, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next is the bills.
The letters get bigger.
Head up with the prescription. I move that the bills listed on the abstract of ordered vouchers be paid as soon as they have been duly ordered by the majority.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is good and wealthy. Emery?
Yes, thank you, um. I do want to wish everyone a happy new year. Um, the last time we were here, we were celebrating, you know, the holidays, but, you know, it's been a very, um, nice, uh, January. We had an opportunity, as a word, to go to the, uh, a fire department dinner for, I think, Engine Company, and it was nice to see everyone there, it's nice to see that the nice amount of 50-year, 25-year, um, honorees that, you know, committing and volunteering to the village and to the, um, fire department for that amount of time and giving of their time, um, and it was a nice night to celebrate. Uh, last week, we were also able to go to the chamber dinner and the gala, which was a wonderful evening, but it really brought to, you know, my attention, and I think everybody's, theirs attention, what great people we have in this village. Um, from Dr. T at Linnbrook High School, the amount he does with the Key Club, and how much he's invested into these kids learning about their community and volunteerism, um, to Anthony Falsetta here at our own Linnbrook Police Department, to our ex-chief Chris Kelly, to the business Crown Ford, these are all great members in our community, um, and they all have contributed in different ways, but yet has made this such a better place, and it really made me thankful, um, to know that we have great neighbors, uh, we have great people here, whether they work for the village, or they volunteer for the village, or they own a business in the village, they really, um, make it a better place. And then to come here tonight and see that the golf outing did so well, you know, what an amazing event. And I have to say, for a non-golfer, I still go, I play golf, I really don't play golf. You know, and it's just a great day to be out there, you know, the 30,000 for the community chest is huge, you know, even though we feel like we all have it good, there's times where we may not have it good, um, and it's nice to know that our neighbors can come and help, and I think it's important, um, that they know that we're here for them, um, and I, that's why I think the community chest is probably one of our better services that we offer within this village. we offer within this village. Because no matter whether they're high times or they're low times, you know what? When they hit their low time, they know that they can call, and someone can be of some sort of assistance. And then, you know, just contributing money to the VFW and the American Legion, it's amazing. You know, we're lucky enough to have American Legion and a VFW that are very active within our community, which again makes Limerick just, you know, a great place. And I find it like just brings to light why Limerick really is the best place to live and raise a family. You know, it's just a great place. I think it was a great month. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to reiterate what Trustee Reardon said, you know, three events between the fire department dinner, the chamber dinner, and now tonight, to see how many people give so much to our community is just amazing, and it's just another reason that makes Limerick such a wonderful place. But a couple of things I wanted to announce is, you know, we're in the middle of January, February's coming up. And, you know, for those who have school-aged children, you'll be having, you know, this kids have a week off in February. Please check the library for the different events that they offer for that week. You know, the events are free, whether it's movies, whether it's different activities in the library, whether it's the museum passes that are available. Please check with the library to see what's, kind of what's going on. And, you know, something for your kid to do for a day that doesn't, that doesn't cost you. I want to send a thank you to our own Toni Ann. She will be singing the National Anthem tomorrow night at the Long Island Nets game. So I just want to say congratulations to her. She's sung, she has sang at many events here in the village, and it does a tremendous job. But, you know, kind of now at the Long Island Nets game is just awesome for her. Congratulations Toni Ann for that.
It's at the Coliseum.
It's at the National Coliseum, yeah. And, you know, again, a thank you, it wasn't, there weren't huge storms, but a thank you to the DPW for all the work they did in the past couple of, couple of storms we had with a little bit of snow and the cold that we've had. You know, to see these guys out there when, you know, it's freezing out there, it was cold. And they're out there every day doing, working hard for us. You know, I just want to say thank you to them. And thank you to everyone, the police, the fire department, who are out there in this weather, who give back to our village. But thank you, everyone, and have a great new year.
Trustee, got you.
Yeah, I think Mike and Emery really captured all the things that we've been at in the last few weeks or so. And my congratulations to the fire department, those members of the chamber who were honored, as well as, you know, all those individuals who did such a great job on the golf outing. It was fantastic, especially the outcome. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy and healthy new year. We're blowing through January already and almost in February, so hopefully some of the stuff that's going around kind of starts to peter down a little bit, and we get, look forward to spring. So happy and healthy to everybody.
Trustee, have a...
For the guys in the fire department, you know, I listened to what you said. I know you guys had a rough year last year. You lost, you know, guys, a lot of guys are like legends. There was one late in the year, John Crowley Senior from, from a truck company. I think 57 years, I was a honorary commissioner. You know, another big loss, all the lives, you know, yourself as chiefs, how many of these young guys or other people you're responsible for and your mentor. So that doesn't go unnoticed up here. So appreciate that. And the chamber with the golf outing, obviously the community chest, great. And it's always nice when we give money to Bill and to Pat and to the VFW, American Legion, great organizations, and we owe them more than we could ever pay back. As well, on another somber note, unfortunately, Sister Mary Dowden from Lydia Peace, I believe she had been in the parish since 1967, between being a teacher and a principal. I know myself, Tommy, with students under her. She touched a lot of lives as well, and measurable for this community. There's also another, another downer, but I'd like you to keep Joseph Cordis' family in your prayers. He passed away suddenly. He has a wife, Allison, a son, Max, who I believe graduated Limerick last year, and a son, Cooper, who's in high school now. He's a big supporter of Limerick basketball, Joseph. And they're doing a Joseph Cordis scholarship through the Limerick Hoops Club. So everybody bringing themselves, look that up, and, and to, you know, to donate and get that going in his memory. And on a better note, Brian, thank you for your service for the, for the village. I know you, you were born and raised here. Being on the board, the BZA for about a year, my wife working for the building department. I can say your knowledge of the codes and just how things work and direction of people is unmatched, and we're lucky to have you. So thank you. And happy new year, everybody.
With that said, well, just a few things. I want to thank the entire staff this past year, but very quick, very quick. And I can't say enough good things about this village. Every person in this village has really worked very hard for us, and I truly appreciate that. To pinpoint one person, well, I got to do that tonight because Stanton's here. But honestly, everyone works very hard, from the office staff, the rec staff, the DPW, everybody, and the people here. Thank you so much for your services. Chief Palladino, thank you for your great job. We're very fortunate. You're getting at the edge of your chair. You want to leave? Or do you have something? You have one thing to say?
I'm going to turn around.
All right. All right, I'll let you get up for...
Looks like he's ready to explode.
I know, that's why. He's looking like very, he's getting a little antsy there.
You look like you're about to close up the meeting, that's why.
No, no, I was going to give you an opportunity.
Actually, I'm here in my capacity as president of the Limerick Roller Hockey League, which is, I, first of all, I have to thank the board. You guys really came through. You helped us get some financing for our boards and our remodels of the rink. It looks fantastic, and it really, we had the rink opening party December 15th. It was incredible. We produced some drone footage, we put it up on our social media. We had great charge of signups. We got like 60 kids in the first month, and that's, you know, we're well ahead of what we had had, and it just sort of hit a lull. So we're having a big signup party on Wednesday, January, this Wednesday, January 24th, 7 to 9, in the barroom at the VFW Limerick. Please come down. We got food, we're drinks, and, and fun, you know? We're trying to build the family atmosphere with the, with the league, and I need young people to get involved, because our board is...
I'm in on that, young stuff.
Our board is aging, and I need, I need, I need blood, young blood to keep this organization going.
Brian, miss the gum for me here.
He's pretending he doesn't hear anything. He's trying to plow through this.
No, no, he actually can't hear it. So anyway, please, see you on social media, check out the website.
This is really very painful.
Sign online, sign up online. Or you can come in person to the signup party, and if, even if you've signed up already, please come to signup party to show your support. But thank you very much, and I really thank you very much for the remodel of this rink. We've had a couple scrimmages on it, and it's really working pretty well.
All the facilities in our village are going to be, are maintained, and it will continue to maintain to the best they can possibly be for us, for this village.
Thank you very much. Don't worry.
As I was saying, thank you very much for everything that everyone does. It really is a pleasure to live in this village and be a part of it. Just with that said, though, is there anything else from the floor? Anybody else have anything to say? I'll just have, you know, for the, Mike just mentioned Sister Mary and Joseph Cordis. We'll have a moment of silence if we bank for a few minutes. Thank you. Keep them in your prayers, please. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn for a work session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.